First we'll have a prayer, then the pledge. Bow our heads please. Dear Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day and for the freedoms we enjoy in our great nation. We pray for our men and women in uniform, both past and present, who provided us with these freedoms with their many sacrifices. We pray for guidance during tonight's council meeting. Help us all to use good judgment when making decisions for the community we all serve. We pray for the sick, that they may be healed and comforted. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Do you pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Hart.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
McRaskey.
Here.
Haver.
Here.
Bart.
Here.
Beverly.
Here. Okay, we need a motion for the approval of July 20th regular council minutes.
I'll make that move.
Mark here makes a motion to approve July 20th meeting minutes.
I'll say it.
Ron Jones seconds, roll call please.
Hart.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McRaskey.
Yes.
Haver.
Yes.
Bart.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hart.
Okay, everybody's had a chance to look at the bills list, see if any motions, or we can approve them, if they need to speak about any of the bills.
I've got a question that I have brought up repeatedly, and I want to do it again.
Okay.
On underground utilities, the sewer flow metering, $500. We've had, just this summer, spring, we've had the 10 years, the 20 year, the 50 year, and the 100 year reign. How much longer are we gonna keep paying them $500?
Till you start doing projects to show what we're taking out of the system.
When are we gonna start turning it over?
We've got a little bit of a plea drawn here.
Okay, that's the only question.
Same question.
It's the only question I had, and I move to approve the bills if nobody else has anything.
Second. I have a motion by Ron Beverly, approve the bills. Mike Barth seconds, the motion, roll call please.
McRaskey.
Yes.
Haver.
Yes.
Bart.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes. Okay, committee reports, I think Bruce, you wanted to speak?
Yes, I do. As soon as I find it, Mayor. The sidewalk committee met very briefly. We had two options, two things that we talked about. One was questioned if they could have a handicap parking spot at Guilford's Corner, and unanimously voted down that there will be no handicap on Guilford's Corner.
You might want to include in that that it was a personal request.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, it was a personal request to have a handicap, and the committee felt that it was not needed one. Also, talked about homeowner wants to add additional sidewalk on their property in Chicago Avenue, and they wanted to know if the village was foot the bill, and we unanimously again voted that if they want to finish their sidewalk to Chicago Avenue, it would be on their dime. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Can I make any remarks? Kent, you want to speak to this?
I would like to.
All right.
Briefly, I don't have a report per se, but I did get a response from Troy on a lot of the questions that we had on personnel matter. I want to review those, go back and look at my own notes and review those, and then I'm gonna get a hold of the committee and see what we need to do.
Okay, great.
So you guys may want to familiarize yourself with what Troy had to say.
All right, anybody else? All right, Kent, you have the floor.
There's several things, a lot of this stuff just came up at the end of last week. First, I'll start with some good news. We did have two change orders for the Hickory Creek Sewer Project. Y'all need to have your vote on here, but the original contract was for $59,565. The two change orders resulted in a credit to us of $1,871. So the new contract amount drops to $57,694. So they're gonna just need to have you approve that.
Motion to approve that.
Sure.
Satisfy the...
It's gotta be a first, right?
Yeah, it's rare.
You need a second?
Second.
And we will.
Do you want to include anything else in that?
No. That'll just make the auditors happy.
Okay, Mark, Haver makes a motion for the change order. Mick McRaskey, second, so roll call please.
Bart.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McRaskey.
Yes.
Haver.
Okay.
That project is completed now?
Yes.
And it's wonderful?
Been working okay. Apparently what they plugged up hasn't backed anybody up.
Do we want to discuss at this time the marking?
I was gonna get to that after I take care of some other shit. Had a long talk with Adam today, and the first thing, I guess I need to run past you, even though I really don't need to, but I'll get your two cents where. They've been working on Antwerp Drive, revisions to that. They're basically ready to move ahead on the Haver Drive part. The one question he had was, do you want to pull all his people off of Haver Drive to do Antwerp quicker, or continue just doing both of them at the same time?
What?
I'd say doing both at the same time, they're all part of the same phase.
What was the resolution on Haver Drive? That's the first I'd heard that.
Well, he's gotta be ready to start designing it, and that leads into...
I thought you were waiting for engineers to out-mark the property so we would know...
That's the...
That's a...
This is the way to deal.
This is talking about the actual sewer.
We're gonna...
This is a split.
Hopefully, we're gonna do that all in one stroke.
That's what I thought you were gonna do, do it all at once. Are we...
Right now, Adam's kinda pulling it different direction. With the change of Antwerp, you know, we're adding more to that project to the 50-year storm plan. You know, he goes, you want us to work on Antwerp, and he's got other projects he's working on too. He kinda asks us where he, you know, feels that his best engineers are gonna work on. Now, Haver's the biggest project in Phase 1 by far, the most money, bigger, you know, construction and everything. This is all part of Phase 1 process, so he's working on all these at the same time. Me personally, I think we should wait a little bit on Haver, not wait too long, but complete Antwerp, complete the Pearl, you know, section with that separation down there, and then I would like all of council to come together and sit down and look at it at Haver, and all agree and be on the same page before they start designing, so we're not backpedaling. That's the biggest project in Phase 1. I do have Adam coming September 8th. He's gonna be here to talk about all the projects, anything you want to ask him questions on, he will be here, so.
So Pearl and Antwerp Drive this year yet?
Yeah.
You know, Haver maybe next year's out here.
Well, he's probably working on some of the phases of Haver right now, you know, just how big is, you know, big is that project is.
I didn't know he was starting on Haver yet, this was...
Well, he'd get dirty too.
I don't want to see Haver Drive put on the back burner again.
But, but wouldn't the key to Haver Drive be the back row, not the front row?
Now, let the back up a second. Here again, I'm gonna count to 10 before I say it. I thought originally, council wanted me to have the surveyor going in, which he was in last week, I don't know if he's done yet. Lay out where the disappeared swales, everybody can see it. I thought you guys said, we were gonna give people so much time to move things, then we were gonna hire somebody to go in and blow the rear soil. I didn't think this was part of Adam's replacing the sewer.
I didn't think that.
Well, that's...
That's something we've all talked about.
Well, yeah, so it's not part of this Phase 1...
Really doesn't need engineering.
Well, no. That's why I was confused by what Mick was saying, that we do it all at once. Well, Adam's not even looking at the back, that's us.
That's personal. Okay, can I ask that we do something? Now, we got, we had a little mix-up on the striping, because we sit around here and we all agree to things...
No, we didn't.
Well, most of us agree to things, and then when it comes time to do it, there's nothing in the records, there's nothing showing that any of us agreed to anything. So, if we're gonna do what Kent just said, hire a contractor, as the village, we're gonna hire a contractor to do that swale out there, then I think we need an affirmed vote from everybody sitting here, so it goes in those records, that we're gonna take care of that project.
I think you need to go with the committee and get the Antwerp Drive thing done, because we promised those people, even when I said on council, we promised those people that we would get that thing straightened out, and it sounds like all the energy that Mike has put in and Kent has put in. I can't talk very well, it's too gone. But with all, and being in that meeting, he's close with Antwerp.
I don't think you want to have two or three different parts of town torn up at the same time, just from a logistical convenience point too. I think it'd be good to finish one, then move on to the next.
That's a good point.
Well, having a field tore up's not really gonna shut down any traffic, bro.
Well, our rear swale, that's not gonna, I don't connect that with anything else, 'cause I, you're gonna figure out how many months you're gonna get people to move things and all this and that.
That's the key, right there.
So, that's a separate...
We need to get, I think we have the cart in front of the horse, I think we need to determine how much time we're gonna get people to remove what's on this whale, and obviously, we don't even know what is on this whale yet, according to what you just said, Kent.
Just eyeballing, yes, clear glass.
Or they're just gonna do that.
Okay.
Falls with, you know, sewer water.
Don't they have enough on their plate?
They'll get it done.
You know, once he gets me the final survey, I guess I can show people, and then, I said that's gonna be a...
Yeah, something Kent can handle too.
Kinda down the road.
You just get done saying how busy and covered up they are.
Well, and I agree with you, we need to set it in stone and take a vote, if that's what it takes, because everything seems to be getting convoluted here all of a sudden, you need to take a vote, so we know where we stand, so when we're out telling people this is what we're gonna do, there may be some accuracy in it.
Well, the question is, how much is it gonna cost to put that swale in? Is it gonna be more than the threshold, 'cause then we'd have to...
I doubt if it costs more than $50.
Okay.
Well, I think the flags were in, the survey was done, right?
I saw some, I don't know if he's totally done.
I saw it next Saturday, he said they had been through there, and he saw flags on the back row.
I saw, I walked back there.
Or done.
The, I think we should probably just let Kent steer the ship here and get this, he'll get this done.
Well, I said, it's gotta be a bit down the road, I mean, once I get the...
And you gotta get some things in place, like Mick just talked about.
The stuff, then yeah, you guys can figure out what you're doing. But anyway, back on Haver Drive, since we've made a nice loop. And, 'cause Adam needs to know, he wants to know by tomorrow, basically. So, if I'm understanding right, you're wanting him to devote always time to Antwerp, Columbia Pearl, hold off on Haver for a while, is that what I'm hearing?
What do you mean, a while?
Well, that's, you're the one saying we all, I'm not saying we...
Wants us engineered that.
I mean, it's all part of Phase 1. I mean, if you wanna...
We don't know how long it's gonna take to get Antwerp and Columbia Pearl done. I mean, is it gonna be two months from now, next month, three months, I mean...
Well, no, but he just needs to know how to allocate his people, so I guess that's what he wants me to find out. Do you want them spreading out?
Has our long-term control plan been approved yet?
Well, asked me at phone call and emails today, it's gonna ask for public notice this month, but they want some revisions from Adam on some dates and...
And that's the same thing, I'm just telling them that...
Your debt would be for never even improved, you know?
And that's the same thing, the same guy that he talked to today said to me three, four weeks ago.
And the EPA is saying Haver Drive should be primary.
Well, at this point...
Isn't that what they've been saying all along?
Yeah, but what you guys agreed to, or you will be agreeing to, is Phase 1's Antwerp Drive, downtown separation, Haver Drive, the Westwood-Chicago area, then there's a couple smaller little things, I think we even did that we are already, and then we've also thrown in Columbia Pearl, 'cause those are two good separation projects, and they'll save the list stations and whatever. So you're committed to doing these within the first five years. So, I mean, on that part, doesn't matter what, you know, what order, you got a five-year window to get them done. I guess at this point, I don't care how you do, I just need to know what to tell Adam so he's not getting there.
Five years is doable.
Or back and forth.
I think you should prioritize where water problems otherwise exist besides just separation. And that would be 49 and toward the south of town here, that seems to make the most sense to me.
So I guess we're gonna hold off on Haver for a little bit, finalize these other two, and Columbia Pearl's one project. So, Antwerp, Columbia Pearl, and then, 'cause he still thinks, at least Columbia Pearl might still get done this year. I don't know Antwerp, he didn't really say with some of the revisions they've gotta do, but he needs to know on that too, before he schedules some other work for that area to look at some of the revisions he's looking at, so...
Well, how close are we really on Antwerp Drive?
Well, we just had a meeting with Adam, drove up here last week, Mike, me, Kent, Ron Daniels, we're all there.
Talked to the owner of the property? Was he here?
Mike has done that.
We talked to them.
And on the owner base, they would have...
Well, they were with the original, but now since council wants, well, now listen, council went from the 10-year storm event, you guys have changed it now where you want the 50, so he's gotta go back and do a bunch more calculation, which might affect the land we're gonna need to get.
Absolutely.
Well, and that's not the engineer's fault.
No.
So let's just not get on that kick.
No, in the meantime, all I'm saying is, is where are we at this point closer to...
He would have maybe, he would have maybe been ready to start Antwerp Drive, once we get the easements and the land bought from a few weeks ago, well, now that's, I don't know how far, and here again...
When's the next conversation gonna occur with the Tippmann family?
Well, at this point... I've told them twice, I can't, if they don't take messages, and...
And we're not sure what revise the model and...
Since our last meeting last week with Adam, because I knew the scope of the property was gonna change, and I was...
Well, it really hurts me to say, well, let's jump right on Antwerp Drive if we don't even know if we're gonna have any property to jump on it with.
Absolutely.
So...
Well, you think it's a question of property or a question of how much?
No, I think right now it's a question of property, primarily, and how much is gonna affect...
My determination was just if and when we break ground, that that be the first place that'd be done. I'm not saying that we gotta go out there and get shovels tonight and all start digging. I mean, if and when this happens, I think that should be first, that's what I'm saying. When we get the okay from the engineers, and they tell us it's ready to go.
What if, and I don't, I'm not arguing with that, but what if everything is already ready for one place, and we're still waiting on a meeting with the property owners of the other place for six months? We neglected the place that's already ready?
Then I suppose that could be changed very quickly.
It won't be the same contractor, right? We'll have to bid each one?
I think it's all his guys, isn't it?
Well, as far as... No, this won't be all, it just depends on when things get done. If you could roll it all into one package, yeah, you'd probably get a better price. If you piecemeal it, I mean, so be it, I don't know.
Well, I think everybody wants, keep moving.
Yeah. So, I guess I'm still backing, I don't know what anybody's saying here, sorry if I'm dense.
Well, you've heard...
I mean, Antwerp Drive, Columbia Pearl, what about Haver? Do you want him to kinda slow down on that?
Get the others done, then when he gets time, start on it.
Okay, well, I'll see...
That's my opinion.
If you guys had the calling tomorrow, I'd love to be, have you be in my position when I don't know what to tell them, what we're gonna be thinking.
I would love to have the information on Antwerp Drive before we put all the rest in that basket.
Maybe by the 8th they'll have the new design, and if people don't like it, well, then you're back to...
What's the most efficient use of his resources, if he would tell you that?
He doesn't really say that, it's just, he just needs to know what project to put him on. Need more people on Antwerp, get it moving faster, that's what he...
Do all the projects, right, so.
I hope so.
Are you gonna have some trouble with the DA, so...
Why can't we say that, we don't even have a plan? It hadn't been approved yet. The plan was...
Well, yeah, the plan's gonna get approved, they're just tinkering with the dates.
How many times we even told that? You know what you're dealing with?
Oh, well, anyway, so I'm trying to kinda hold off on Haver, but while we're on it, before I get to the next part, which might get even more mad, when it does come time for Haver Drive, are you in favor changing the water line while we're out there? It would be a totally separate contract, of course, it wouldn't get paid out of sewer funds. I think it'd be stupid not to do it.
Is it in need?
Yes, we just had an issue out there last week that had to make two trips to Fort Wayne finding parts.
You've talked about it over and over, so I would think that would be the...
We have a straw vote?
Yeah, anymore, I guess I gotta have something on the record, because nobody remembers from one meeting to the next what's been decided. Sorry to be blunt, but, and along with that, 'cause it's been brought up, nothing ever decided. Sidewalks or not?
I think that's a great idea.
I think that we should do the water line when we do the sewer.
Well, that's it, yeah, I'd roll it in as a side project, but do it at the same time.
Correct.
Same time.
I think it needs done, and I will make a motion, or a suggestion, or whatever you want.
I guess so, something, at some point, people don't say when this ever getting decided.
Well, it'll be in the notes now.
It's gonna be in the minutes.
Okay, what about sidewalk?
Hey, somebody needs to second that.
Well, I second it.
Well, I'm waiting for the motion to get completed here, so...
Motion?
You're gonna, is there more, any more to that motion as far as your water line and your sewer line? Do you want to do that combined, or together?
Yeah, I mean, that's basically the motion, you want to do water, sewer.
So I have motion under four to approve adding the Haver Drive, redoing the Haver Drive water line when we do the sewer, and Kent is looking for approval, so we have a motion.
By me.
And we have a second, by Mike Barth. Roll call please.
Bart.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McRaskey.
Yes.
Haver.
Okay.
Then before I move off of Haver Drive, sidewalk, yes or no?
Where?
Haver Drive.
Or?
Haver Drive. Okay.
I...
It's been debated for months, I don't think it needs more months of...
No, he's gotta keep the front swales.
Shouldn't I go to the sidewalk committee?
Well, you guys have had it for nine months. Now here again, sorry to get a little bit riled up, but this has been discussed in council.
That is one of the situations where a sidewalk is not going to...
Well, you're saying, it's been discussed, nobody's ever made a decision.
We just put Haver Drive on hold, didn't we? Do you want this information...
Well, okay, fine, if it's on hold, just don't let it sleep for nine more months.
You're talking about sidewalks now?
Yes.
Discuss it, that's what these meetings are for, is discuss things. We don't have to do it after the meetings on phones and stuff.
I think you'd better just turn it over to committee, and have a meeting, and bring it back to council, and then we'll have something to put in the minutes, and then you guys can vote on it.
Okay, so I'll tell him, since he's holding up on Haver, I'll get back to him on sidewalk.
So I would suggest that we have a, Bruce Hart, Mick McRaskey, and Ron Beverly, Bruce set up a sidewalk committee meeting, so you can move back next meeting to council.
But Kent, are you still going to entertain talking to some contractors about the swale out back?
Oh, at some point down the road I will. I mean, at this point, it's gonna be far enough out, I gotta worry about it.
I feel that.
Now, I'll get your blood pressure worked up just a little bit more before we get to the downtown. But here again, something you gotta face, if I want to get it all the way now versus a few months down the road. We talked about the $518,000 contract for the Phase 1 projects, okay? It's a long-term control plant project. Everybody's on board with that, right? So far, we've paid about $82,000 as of the end of June, okay? Now, Adam was saying, since he's been having to go back and re, re, re-look at Antwerp Drive, that's eaten up more money than he originally thought, plus by adding in Columbia Pearl, Ogen, you know, that wasn't originally part of the plan. He's not saying there'll be a change order in the contract. He goes, it's gonna be close, he and I will both keep an eye on things over the next few months, once we start approaching that magic number, he'll send like a revised figure if one's needed, you know? And I've no idea what that number will be, I'm just gonna say $100,000, just to throw a number. Don't hold me to it, and then you guys will have to vote to approve that, or you know, whatever. He just didn't want to wait till the last minute and have it brought up. So you're just kind of forewarned, there's a chance that engineering fee will change based on some of the changes in scope we've been doing here.
You've only spent how much, 60?
82.
82, and...
Out of 518.
Well, we've added some projects.
Yeah, so I can understand why there's gonna be a change, but if he can still squeeze all this out of that 518, you know, that's fine, he just was saying it might be tight. So there again, so it's in the minutes, so let's say three months from now, I come back and see if there's a change order, we won't have a 20-minute debate on why there is one, okay?
Okay. I'm fine with it.
Okay, and the last thing.
Anybody else?
Well, it's a good choice to have.
Yeah, yeah, basically, but, I'll segue into the downtown striping by first saying, Diane and I are gonna be in Sandusky all day Thursday, so I probably won't get a very good look at the striping until I get back Friday. The plan is now, they come in Wednesday morning to do the downtown striping. I had the guys deliver their flyers door to door to places that were open today, there's a lot that weren't open on Monday, so we'll catch them tomorrow. We're gonna come in early, cone everything off both sides. It might be shut down all day, 'cause it's gonna take a while to do all the deciling, deciling. So anyway, you're up to speed on that, and then the only thing I want you to do is get something in the minutes for future generations, that council is the ones in favor of changing the angle parking, and the only reason I want that on the books is that 45 degrees is sort of the standard, so it's... And I heard who that guy explained, there's a slight risk, I'd imagine, it's pretty minuscule, but if something would ever come up to where that becomes an issue, I guess I don't want to be the one on the hook for any liability issues by me having changed it.
When you...
Because I've not wanted to change it, so if the council wants to change it, I want something in the minutes reflecting that.
When you learned about the minuscule threat of liability, did you by chance say to Troy, so he'd have an opportunity to look for something up if it needed to be? Have you or you have...
Well, I presume you're saying, just because it's at a non-traditional angle, that if
Well, I presume you're saying just because it's at a non-traditional angle, that if somebody, if there's an accident because somebody's backing out or into traffic, that that may be one reason to put a hook in the village to say, if you had used traditional angled parking spaces, I mean.
It's like anything else, there's a risk of anything.
Yeah, because if I had a parking space in the downtown, and something happened, and you say, well, if you took it back to the old way, there was more room, or whatever, I mean.
Well, today, there were two cars parked straight towards buildings, no angle whatsoever, straight towards the building.
We don't have a one.
So we're going with 90-degree parking? Anyway.
What I'm saying is, yeah, maybe you do open yourself up, maybe there's somebody down the road saying, hey, but there's nothing that I'm aware of by law that requires them to.
No, it's not, it's just like the industry.
Industry standard.
But there again, I just don't necessarily need my name being on there, because I'm not the one that really made that decision. Shall we take a vote? Yeah, I want something in the minutes.
Before you speak, I'll call a vote, but if I understood the poll that you had, and the poll I took from everybody, tell me and correct me if we're wrong on this before you vote. Mike Barth.
Most in favor.
Bruce Hart. In favor.
Yep.
In favor.
Ron Jones.
Got one question.
Yes.
If I said.
I saw your email, that's why I'm gonna talk about.
Okay, you mentioned the handicap places, that's gonna mess those up, that was my only concern.
I don't know how, I won't know that till they space it out, and then we'll. All ours is based on how their striping comes out. We have to make changes.
That was my only concern.
Then, uh, Ron Beverly?
In favor.
Okay. Nick?
Yes.
And Mark?
I was against it because of the, number one, with Kentsey Mill and the handicaps, but also losing any spots at all I was opposed to.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, now we'll entertain a motion, or whatever you want to do to put this on the book.
I'll make the motion that we change the downtown parking to 30-degree angle.
Ron Beverly makes a motion to make, to change the parking downtown to 30 degrees.
I've got one other question.
Please.
30 degrees, Edgerton has this now, is that correct?
Oh, yes. Many, many towns have it.
I went Edgerton and really not much different, unless you put them side by side.
Yeah, but I mean.
My question is, as if you.
Park beside of something, a four-door duly pickup truck.
Right.
Your line of sight opens up so you, so much faster at 30 than it does at 45.
I just want, I went by Edgerton and.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? We'll need a second, to Ron Beverly's motion.
I'll second it.
Who's second? Bruce Hart's second. Roll call, please.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kratzky?
Yep.
favor?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Okay.
Then my last thing, if something else comes up, and it's connected with that, I get, and I'm only bringing it up, a committee can look into it, doesn't have to be tonight. About 15-minute parking, three-hour parking, skateboards, bicycles, there's been talk of just getting rid of everything to clean up the downtown, whatever. I don't care what you do, but whatever committee wants to look at that, have at it and get back with me.
We've already got the sidewalk committee meeting before next council meeting. I would think that would probably be a good fit there.
Because I might not go ahead and move, I don't know how those 15-minute signs are gonna work out with the new. I might just let them sit till I know for sure what you guys want to do.
What you're asking or talking about is the signs that.
Yeah, and I don't care if you keep them all, get rid of them all, I'm just throwing it out there.
And there's a number of different issues involved with that, correct? Signing?
Well, yeah, it's whatever you guys want to keep in there. I don't want to move anything till I know for sure, so we're not drilling extra holes and all of that.
Okay.
The 15-minute, the handicap, the no skateboards, there's signs up there for certain hours of parking and certain hours of skateboarding and.
Well, the only thing I'd be in favor of keeping is at 2:30 to 5:30, so that we can sweep.
And that's just hanging from the first.
Yeah.
That's hanging from the.
And that's not saying everybody ought to obey that, but all the rest, most of those are by ordinance, so it's you guys just to decide what you want to do.
If I understand it right, then you're talking about three-hour parking? That's one of them.
Yeah, 'cause every people were for and against that, council people, so if you might as well debate them all and be done.
All right, anything else, Ken?
No, I think I pretty much got that off my chest.
You feel better?
No.
We'll turn the floor to the juristics to go over ordinances and resolutions.
First thing I have is ordinance 2015-09, third reading by caption only, an ordinance authorizing the village clerk treasurer to transfer funds.
So moved.
This is third ring, Ron Beverly, or Ron Jones makes the motion.
Second.
Mick Kratzky, second. Roll call, please.
favor?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Next is resolution 2015, which is resolution, agenda says ordinance, resolution 2015-14, the second reading by caption only, a resolution to assess streetlight village. Next is resolution 2015-15, is the number that should be in there, a first reading by caption only, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
What, what number did you say that would be?
That should be 15.
15, 20.
Well, it's kind of a goof.
Oh, never mind, never mind, I'm sorry.
15.
Yeah, so the fire truck could be an ordinance.
It's an ordinance, yeah, the next one is ordinance 2015-10, first reading by caption only, an ordinance authorizing the advertising for bids for the sale of a 1997 Ford F-450 KM mini rescue truck owned by the village of Hicksville in conformity with Ohio Vice Code 721.15, and declaring an emergency.
And can I require an emergency?
I'd like to get it sold.
You got advertising, get it sold so the funds can be used.
Plus, I've got ads ready to do.
I would move that would be a sensible area.
Do we need any more conversation on this? Okay. I would check. All right, Mick, or Ron Beverly makes a motion on, authorizing the rules on 2015, if I understand it right, XX1, is that?
Dash 10, 2015-10.
Dash 10, okay. Authorizing the sale of a fire truck to waive the rules. Roll call, please.
favor?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hart?
Abstain?
Jones?
Yes.
Kratzky?
Yes.
So second, third reading is ordinance 2015-10 by caption only, an ordinance authorizing the advertising for bids for the sale of a 1997 Ford F-450 KM mini rescue truck owned by the village of Hicksville in conformity with Ohio Vice Code 721.15, and declaring an emergency.
So moved.
Ron Jones makes a motion to, on resolution 2015-10.
Second.
Second, Ron Beverly. And this is just for the sale of the fire truck.
It's just to advertise for bids for the sale.
I'll add to that after your rule call.
Roll call, please.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hart?
Abstain?
Jones?
Yes.
Kratzky?
Yes.
favor?
Yes. And that bid opening, I've got it set for August 17th, so I should have something for you to vote on at the next meeting?
It's for industrial part.
No, that's for the fire truck.
On this fire truck.
Industrial part, since you mentioned it, that bid opening is next Wednesday, so I'm not sure if Paul or Warren will have anything ready for Troy for the 17th or not. Just have to see how it goes.
Are you done bid opening for the street here?
Uh, no, yeah, that's all gonna be done in the fall. Fire truck, I'm gonna be here on the 17th.
Okay.
When is the street, the 12th?
12.
Yeah. Fire trucks to the 17th.
Yep.
Thank you.
The other two, I know the park agreement, I know Mike, you've had contact with the school about that.
Yes, I have.
And is that?
Yeah, they were.
You're okay with that, so?
Well, I spoke to Mr. Hendrix, said that we're gonna be bringing that contract to him, with the increase and the reasons why, so do we need a motion to push that through, or?
Abstain resolution, so we need to bring it to enter into that, I'll bring that to the next meeting. And the media con lease, is there been any?
I spoke to Mike Dickerson, he's regional director for media con, I said, where are we at with it? Um, he said, I know they agreed upon it, had come back across his desk, a couple of his bosses had said that is a increase, and I said, yes, you knew that a long time ago when we presented it, that's a holdup, and he said, there's not really a holdup, we're gonna get it paid, and I think the contract's up in November, so. They kind of held it up, asking why, what for, or maybe after they okayed the contract, and then saw the increase, so he said, it will get paid.
If I understood right, gone back to March, their attorney will get it around and get it to you for review. Now, hopefully they'll remember that.
Did they get Channel 15 resolve?
I have no idea on that.
It's not on now?
Yes, it is.
It is on? I talked to him last week, it wasn't on, I was asking about that too, so.
I talked to him Friday. I talked to him Friday, they had a lady in town going door-to-door, you know, such thing, asking any questions. She knew everybody had the cable in town, and she walked up, called me by name, so. I think they're out there trying to figure out how to fix their problem because of the low involvement of the, I think it was 386?
Yeah, our customers are complying with media con.
Yeah, and I think they're trying to fix that. Okay. Anything else, Rick? Going on, please?
I have none.
Okay. Fire?
I have nothing.
Got a question. Did you ever donate, or let Eden borrow a truck or equipment? Okay, I just never heard anymore, I was just curious.
I got everything we need.
Good.
Um, and I've got something, any report on the breakfast the other morning?
Take care, everybody, for came to breakfast, helped us out. I think the ladies made over $1,000.
Awesome. Super. Well, like we've stated in the past, you know, with your auxiliary working the way they are, with the fire department and EMS, that's huge.
It is.
And you guys, you guys and gals have accomplished a lot.
They help keep us in line.
There you go. Uh, EMS, okay?
I was talking about the dollar an hour, that's right.
Okay, did we, do you want to turn that back over to committee, or do you want to open up a discussion? The ordinance.
The ordinance says any EMS that's on, that's performing on call duties gets the dollar an hour. I think that's clear, it says any.
The ordinance hasn't passed like yesterday.
Yeah, three, four years ago, at least.
So do we go back?
Well, they were entitled to it, I don't think you have any choice.
Well, then, let's all agree to it.
So do we need a motion, straw vote, what do we need?
Let me make a motion.
I made the motion that we.
Follow the law.
Follow the law and go and do the back pay of the dollar an hour on the.
Well, just specify, so Diane knows how far back to go.
Yeah.
I mean, she'll, she'll need to know when she gets back, so, plus the minutes will need to reflect that, too.
Like, if you're gonna back to the effective date of that. Because if I remember correctly, there was a period of time where we took that dollar an hour away, correct? It was in for a while, took it away when we were doing budgetary things, and then put it back in, then.
So you're saying December, December of 12?
The ordinance is dated December 3, 2012, but it states effective January 1, 2013.
So that would be the date.
So that was, that's the date, Cheryl, of my motion.
All right. And I second that. All right, Ron Beverly makes a motion on the dollar an hour to be paid back for EMS to January 1, 2013.
Correct, sir.
Mick Kratzky, seconds. Roll call, please.
favor?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hart?
Abstain?
Jones?
Yes.
Kratzky?
Yes. Okay, going on? Do you need to speak to anything here on the work report?
Mary.
I don't know, just the cash report, anything tax about down there.
She's got more.
Okay.
We had also talked to Troy the last time about how they were gonna run the on-call pay for Cody and I, if we take a run on-call.
Okay, that's.
And Adam, I've solicited some advice from the municipal league people on that. That issue on that is, and I brought this up before, is making sure that there's a, there's kind of a strange line of cases, but law on the issue of people who are serving in joint roles, basically as full-time employees and as volunteers. The argument could be, if you're a full-time employee of a, of the village, you can also be a volunteer of the village. You're either an employee or you're not, and so the issue that needs to be squared away on that is if they're making runs outside of their normal work hours, in other words, on-call time, what's, how's their pay to be calculated for those runs, because there are exemptions in the wage and hour laws for firemen, EMTs, people like that, but making sure that all of that applies, otherwise you get into a situation where if the run pay, and I don't have these numbers off the top of my head, but if the run pay is for whatever level, EMT is $13 an hour, but one of these two back here, their salary, arguing the chief is a exempt salary position, um, so that's not the issue. It's more the full-time EMT, if his hourly rate is $15 an hour, I know he's salary, but if you figure out what his hourly rate would be for his hours worked, it's $15 an hour, but he's only being paid $14 an hour on his runs as a volunteer, it creates two potential issues. One is, should he be getting that $15 an hour, whatever his normal pay rate is, and two, if that takes him over 40 hours in a week, should he be getting overtime, like time and a half pay for, for that, so it creates a bunch of issues having full-time people who are also volunteers, and it's not just them, it wouldn't be any different than say if we had a police officer, or, or one of Kent's guys, or somebody that was also a volunteer EMS person. If you're, if you're a full-time employee of the village otherwise, there's some reasons in there that have to be addressed properly. Otherwise, you run the risk of auditor type, or wage and hour type, you know, if it comes up, second guessing the way you're doing things, so. That's, that's why I solicited the opinion, just, it's not a real common thing, I mean, it's common amongst villages, but I think a lot of the villages that are our size don't have full-time people, and I think the people that are bigger than us have off, or a lot of full-time people, so they don't have to worry about having volunteers other than auxiliary people that all they do is get paid like an hourly rate that aren't otherwise full-time. So it's kind of, we're in a unique situation there, I'm not saying it's totally unheard of, but it's not common, so.
Would the council be opposed, Scott and I had talked about this. If Cody and I were to take a run during on-call hours, each run is approximately one hour. So Cody's on-call tonight from 4 to 10, if he has one run, is council opposed to the next day he can either come in one hour late or leave one hour early to compensate for that run?
We comp time.
But aren't you still trying to get an understanding? I'd like to hear your legal opinion before.
I mean, I think, I mean, that is a solution as opposed to overtime, that's, sometimes is an option where people can, some people like to have comp time instead of overtime, and, and just that way you keep yourself under the 40 hours or whatever in the, in the pay period. That could be a consideration, right, that could be a consideration.
Just like to have your legal opinion.
Okay.
On, on the previous.
And I should have that by the next time, I should, like I said, I'm working on that with others.
The biggest problem that I see is if he would come in an hour earlier, or leave an hour earlier. The only reason he's there is, is to cover those hours.
Well, he would, he would still be on-call, and he'd get the dollars for that hour, but he would have to be at the station without.
Okay, I understand you.
That could get confusing, I'm trying to.
Very confusing.
I just speak here from Diane's end, then I don't know.
We can simplify that.
I think we better go on Mick's suggestion here and let Troy handle it. And I don't think we have legislation on the books to do it anyway.
Not right now.
Can you bear with us?
So, going on?
I have two more things.
Hang on.
Okay.
I just wanted to remind everybody that the rescue squad is gonna start doing pre-vital checks the first Tuesday of the month, starting tomorrow from 10 to 2 at the station, and also, we are sponsoring a back-to-school youth dance on Saturday at the station from 8 to 11.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That was part of my closing, so there you go.
Now I'm done.
All right, thank you. Cheryl, you'd like to speak with, for the clerk treasurer's report?
I'm there, the cash report, which is the usual one, the income tax report is in there with the latest data. And the councilman also got a website questionnaire. We do have the option to, I don't know, upgrade our website, if anyone, do you guys like use it? Nobody uses it?
I go to the.
Yeah, I'll look at it, that's it.
Actually, Diane and I think that it is, when we were talking about it with Andrew, that even though it's the same one we've always had, and it's kind of old-fashioned now, it, there's not a lot of things that the public can do on it. We like it that way, because we don't want them changing things, if that makes sense. But the questionnaire is there, just to give you an idea that if you go to the website, what would you like to change on it? So let us know, or if it's just okay the way it is, because that's what we went for.
Okay. I gave my opinions. That would be the way to start it, everybody turn our opinion. Okay, well, listen, I would like to close by mentioning, you know, to thank you to the chamber for, and the people involved in Summerfest. You know, that they tried something different for some time, and had it back in the back, and I think, you know, they're trying to create and showcase Hicksville, you know, a good venue, um, I think they pulled it off. Also, a big thank you to all the village employees and departments, for a job well done, we've been tore up, we're still continuing the effort. If you notice, our Kent's gang's out there cutting back catch basins and sucking them out, and making sure that things work properly in our village. And down here at this end, a thank you to the gals and Jay for doing what they do, and a big thank you out there to the police, fire, and EMS. Thank you very much, I'll look for a motion. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Does this gentleman have anything?
He talked to Kent. It's all done. I asked them all.
And you got a motion?
Yep. Mark Garret makes a motion.
I'll second.
Bruce Hart, seconds. Roll call please. To turn.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I know, I know. See, now you guys are gonna have to get.
Thank you all for attending.
Have to get up.